So good evening and welcome to the October 4th regularly scheduled school committee meeting. It is now 6:00 PM and I'll call the meeting to order. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. And I do not see anybody else raising their hand. So we will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and we'll start with a roll call. Pam, if you don't mind starting us off.
Hi, everybody. Me, Aunt Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
What's your position again? You're new here.
Right, that's good, that's good.
Gregory Thompson.
Anton Mallor Shaw.
Good evening, Gordon Smith, Superintendent of School.
Sarah Trullio.
Gold Fazika.
Elizabeth Marcian Boucher.
Kevin Brown, Director of Curriculum.
Nick Cassidy.
Excellent, thank you very much. And our first item is the approval of minutes from September 20th.
Okay, I move to approve the minutes from the September 20th, 2021 regular session meeting.
Motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Alright, that motion carries five to zero. Next, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. No one is with us here in person, but if there's anybody at home who would like to address us, please raise your hand now. So no one there, so we'll move forward with committee and subcommittee communications. And Nick, if you don't mind starting us off, that would be great.
Yep, so honestly, not much has happened at ELHS since we last met, but some notable events were the club there this past Monday during lunch where students can sign up and learn about new club at the school. We also had our first National Honor Society meeting and we voted for our class officers for that. And we picked a date for the induction ceremony, which is November 10th. And for the class of 2023, we have about 51 applicants, which is actually a lot for this year. I think last year we had about 30 something, which was actually crazy because we only had 10 members before. And we also had a shelter in place today at school, but that's not anything crazy. I'm sure you all knew about that, but that was basically it.
That was a drill.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nick.
How are you doing?
I think good. My class passed, so.
Nice, good job.
Excellent, thank you so much. All the facts?
I'm good, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, the LPVEC Students of the Month in Carpentry. In Carpentry, Jack Learned. And Information Support Services and Networking, Douglas Daniu. And Technology, Technical Career Exploratory, Aza Schaefer. All received awards from the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative for the month of October.
Excellent, congratulations to those students.
Antonelle? Um, Greg and I participated in the Spartan Sprint Pass, was it two weekends ago?
Last weekend.
Last weekend.
Oh yeah, two weeks ago.
Exciting. Yeah, I think there was about 100 people that were running in it. So it was a nice turnout, beautiful day. Great fundraiser, I'm assuming, too, for Eleaf? Yeah.
Eleaf Hill?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm going to stay. And I have nothing else. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, over the past couple of weeks, I was able to get to three out of the five schools' PTO-sponsored events. So they were either at the Depot or at the Apple Place. And those were really well-attended by families. It gave families an opportunity to engage in some meet-and-greet activities outside with their families to support some local businesses, so that was really great. And then I was also able to bring my own kids just to the Bike Rodeo, which was a really nice event. Don was there filming. It was another, it was the same weekend as the Spartan Sprint. So it was great to see the facilities getting used, seeing ELHS really have an active vibe to it. And it was terrific. They gave out helmets to the kids and they had timed slots where you could actually go on a bike ride with the bike police in town. So building that positive rapport with the local law enforcement. So it was a great turnout that day as well. And that's it for me. So moving into our DESI update. Gordon?
Okay, so in your package, you have a couple of different memos from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. At the end of September, they updated all school districts on their mask mandate and their vaccination threshold and metrics. And simply put, basically what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has done is they've taken their mask mandate, which originally was put in place for all school districts back in August, and was going through October 1st with the idea that the commissioner would be looking at different things. Obviously, health data and how the school year opened to see whether it should be extended or whether it could be lifted at that time. But even with the presentation back in August, there was going to be some type of metrics involved in terms of how the mask mandate in a given district might be lifted. The commissioner has extended the mask mandate across the Commonwealth for all districts till November 1st with the idea that, starting as early as October 15th, should a school district, and this would be done on a school-by-school basis in a given district, so we have five schools, we would look at each school individually, should a school district show at each school that they've reached the 80% level of vaccination for staff and students who are eligible for the vaccination, which basically is 12 and up at the moment, so it would be our 12 to 18-year-olds. So with that metric, so to speak, what we have started to do is we've worked with the East Long Meadow Education Association and we're working with our nurse leader. And actually, I apologize, I think we do have our nurse leader, Kelly LaBombarde, in the audience. Might want to invite her in since I'm moving into this part.
She has her hands up. Don, if you can bring her in.
Come.
Thank you.
Gordon, you said each school has to reach the criteria, but individual schools?
Individual school, yeah. So I misspoke, so it actually is done school by school.
Yeah, if it's an individual, that doesn't really wouldn't be able to get there.
Correct, yeah.
Hi, Kelly.
Hello.
Hi, Kelly, I apologize.
That's okay, I was listening.
I was so excited to get into the presentation, the mask mandates. So we've been working with Kelly and we've been working with our building nurses as well as our teachers and really all staff as to figure out what would be the best way to bring in and collect in a confidential way the information of our staff as to whether they've gotten vaccinated or not. And so what we've decided to do, and Kelly might be able to give more insight in how they're doing this at each building, is staff, as well as our families, are really comfortable with our building nurses. Not only during the pandemic, but pre-pandemic, our nurses have always been extraordinary in building that relationship between the school and the home. And our staff feels comfortable. And so staff, starting today, voluntarily can provide this information to our school nurse at the building at which they work. And the nurses will start to bring in the information, categorize it, put it into a spreadsheet that stays confidential with them, but it will allow us to calculate where we stand with staff. And Kelly, I don't know if you want to speak to that as well as when we move into students, how we, you know, as we begin outreach to families, we also have the state registration that we can pull information.
Right, from our health program, yes. So right now, we have 62% of our East Long Meadow High School students are vaccinated. And we have 58% of our 7th and 8th graders are vaccinated. So that's pretty good. I did notice there are some families, the students only have one vaccine, so we're going to encourage everybody to get the second one because then they'll be determined to be fully vaccinated two weeks after the second one. And I'm already receiving notification of vaccines from staff. So I'm sure the nurses are also, and it just started today.
Outreach to families, we may actually pick up, am I correct, because not everybody chose to provide the information to the state database. So as we begin that outreach, same type of outreach that we're right now doing with staff, where it's voluntary at this point, if families want to disclose that information. But basically, what it allows is, on a school-by-school basis, should a given school meet that 80% threshold for the population who can get vaccinated, they would be able to unmask. Now, with that said, you would have individuals who, according to the guidance anyway that we're looking at here, if they're not vaccinated, they would need to stay masked. In our elementary schools, all three basically would need to stay masked because right now, we don't have a vaccine for students who are in pre-K through 5.
Right.
And some of our 6th graders, for that matter, because it's age 12, and some of our 6th graders are 11.
Right.
Even if there's a town mandate, do we still, and we reach the 80%?
So we would have to work in conjunction, that's a great question. We would have to work in conjunction with the town. So currently, we do have a mask mandate in town. I do know that the town manager, Mary McNally, is making a recommendation for one of the vacant, there are two vacant positions right now on the Board of Health. There is an interested physician in town who would like to serve on the Board of Health. And so our town manager is going to make that recommendation to the town council at their meeting next week. I believe within their presentation next week and possibly their meeting at the end of October. You know, if they could have a Board of Health up and running.
I bet they could weave that. You might want to mention that to Barry, too. This is a unique situation to second read an applicant. I wonder if they would consider just appointing immediately because this has been pretty well-upped. The direct impact on businesses in town, never mind just the school and the personnel of this town.
What Mary's doing is following the charter.
Yeah. That's fine, but I think there's got to be an exemption saying, "We need a Board of Health seated now because they put this management on without them." The board isn't able to take it off, but she should seat the board now, and they should bypass the second look.
The way the charter is written is, she makes the recommendation, the council has a time period to not necessarily reject it, or not necessarily accept it, but reject it.
Wow, so she could appoint it right away.
It can be appointed, and they have that window.
Does she know that? Hopefully?
Well, I'm sure. She's following the charter.
I'm just saying that because if she appoints right away, then they can seat that board sooner than later and get it up to speed. I'm just worried.
I certainly can ask. I think we'll learn more. There's a department head meeting on Wednesday. I wasn't under the impression that, I thought she was making the recommendation. I wasn't under the impression that the person would then be seated during the time.
Well, it's, it's.
But I think it's imperative because if DESI pulls this off, I don't know that this new person or new people on the Board of Health are going to, first meeting, jump in and say, "Okay, masks off." I don't know if they're going to do that. So we need to have this in place. It's unfortunate that most of the board resigned and left us with this to deal with, but we have to. And so if DESI is going to help and let us get to mask optional, we need the town to be ready to do that because I don't think it's going to last all winter. I think potentially December, January, February could be worse again.
Yeah.
So we need to be honest because otherwise, we'll miss the chance. I just, I hope the town doesn't mess that up for us.
Well, I think that's an important note, too, that we don't have, beyond Kelly, we don't have our other local health officials with us today because there really aren't any individuals in place. So we are kind of leaning especially hard on Kelly right now to be the voice of local health. We really have other hovers that we can, we can speak out and survive this one way.
But I think it's, to your point, Greg, I think if Gordon talks to Barry and the department heads, then we get clarification on how we're going to proceed with the sense of urgency that we're talking about.
Yeah. The other thing I would say, Gordon, if we do communicate with families, I know when I went to my physician for a physical, she looked up whether or not I was in the state system, and I was not, and I had received the vaccination. So families may not know, they're not even in the state registry. So we must, I would say that to people. You may think you're registered, but you may not be. Please just let us know.
If you're willing, let us know, and then, you know, then we can, just like we do with anything else with immunization or any other health-related situation, that's between the family and the building nurse.
Right, but I think it's going to be a close percentage, so every little bit is going to count. If we say to families, "We can't rely on the state recording because it didn't work for me," so I imagine it's not 100%.
Right.
You know, we can give one or two or three percentage points by just asking that question. Please just let us know, you know, double-check, verify, kind of thing.
So Kelly and I will actually work on a message.
And make it easy for them to do so. What are we asking them to do? Send a copy of the card, or how does that work?
Copy of the card will be fine. Some people have it on their portal with their physician. You can print that, just so that we have the dates. And, you know, we can say that someone is fully vaccinated two weeks after the second shot.
Will we require proof, or can it just tell us?
We have to have some kind of proof in order to, I mean, we have to keep it confidential, but we have to have some kind of proof to hit the metric. Alright, so Kelly and I will work on a message to families. And we'll try to get that out this week. Kelly, was there anything additional in terms of our collection of information that we needed to say?
I don't think so. I don't believe so.
Flu shots are coming up. It's always good to get your flu shot.
October 5th and 6th at the fire department, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Just a question, too, about the middle school because the 6th graders are also going to be included in that count. So while 58% of 7th and 8th seems high.
Yeah. So I think it's really going to be important that, as we message this out, we also message to 6th grade families because there are some that are, their children haven't had the chance to get the vaccination because they're 11. Those who have turned 12, we may want to provide information as to how they can get the vaccination.
That's going to be a tricky one in particular.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a message to the 6th grade class by itself. Yep.
So when we count all of the Burchland Park students, it only comes up to 34% because there's those students that cannot be vaccinated yet. So 7th and 8th graders is 58%, all students at Burchland is 34% are vaccinated.
Wow, yeah.
But you wouldn't count the ones who cannot be vaccinated?
No, you would.
You would have.
Well, if you have to go school by school, you have to count them.
Count the school.
Because it's the school as a whole, but not the 11-year-olds.
But not the 11-year-olds?
Yes.
Yes, in the building.
It's the people in the building. It's the percentage of people in the building.
Okay, alright.
That's why I think that's going to be.
That's the person should be very careful.
Very tricky.
You're not going to be able to.
It's only the high school. And I think the student population, I think, is close to 80% because, what staff, there's student ratio, 4:1?
Probably.
Probably.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to be 78 and 90. We're going to have to be up there.
To, yeah, have the option.
You know, it's going to be, it's going to be tight. I think if we're at 62, 80 is a high threshold.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're right.
And maybe that's why they said it, because they don't think we're, I don't know, I don't know, maybe they don't, I don't.
I am curious to see how many schools get the 80%.
Get the 80%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
In the state.
I think that a lot of it has to do with people being wary about the vaccine. I personally think, my own personal opinion, if they ever allowed the Johnson &amp; Johnson to be taking out the kids, I think we would see a spike in people getting their children vaccinated because it's just more traditional, it's more like the regular flu vaccine we've been getting. You feel like it's one and done. You, you know, they're not hitting you up with a booster shot now. I do, I just, I don't know, I don't know. You wonder what people are going through their heads.
I think, I think we're maxed out. I think people are going to get it, got it, if they haven't.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's not much incentive to get it because even if you get it, you have to wear a mask. And if you get it, you got to get a booster. What's the incentive? You know, it's unfortunate because we're all sitting here with masks on, even though we've been vaccinated. But here we are.
Kelly, once you receive the information, where does it then go? Like, is there a portal for you to input all the information into just so that families have a clear picture of, like, data, has the state not established the next step yet?
So then the next step is basically, as far as I understand it, the nurses keep the information confidential for each building.
Okay.
They provide me the statistical information.
Okay.
And then I have to, as a district, attest to the numbers that I'm getting from each nursing office. And then there's a form that I would complete and send to the DESI portal.
So there is that level of anonymity that travels really throughout families?
Basically, it's just going to be percentages.
Okay. I mean, that's important, people know where their information is going once it's turned over to the schools, that it's really just an attestation form from you.
Absolutely.
That's going to kind of.
No names will be mentioned. And, you know, we lock that up in our cabinets. We wouldn't just be laying around. It would be locked up.
Thank you, Kelly.
This is not health-related, but just continuing with sort of DESI guidance as they obviously have guided us. It does have an element of health. You know, they've guided us on spacing and physical distancing and masking, and they've also guided us on transportation. You know, obviously, now we're still masking on buses. That's still required. Windows are down. We also know that this fall, throughout the Commonwealth and really, I guess, throughout the nation, we're seeing shortages of bus drivers as well as other personnel, paraprofessionals, substitutes, and so forth, which has caused some challenges with transportation for the East Long Meadow Public Schools, but really challenges for transportation for all school districts, not only in Western Mass, but probably across the Commonwealth. You've seen that the governor had called in the National Guard to actually help with driving buses for a few districts on the eastern end of the state and I believe possibly in Holyoke, in the western area of the state. But Mrs. Blair has more specific updates just on where we are with challenges on transportation in the East Long Meadow Public Schools.
So we're still down two buses. And basically, in addition to the two buses, we're down three spare drivers. So what do I mean when I say that is, yes, sometimes there's a brand-new bus driver that has not driven that route, so there are some challenges with that. Sorry, Don. No, I said I wasn't going to talk tonight, and I'm talking just a little bit. So it has been challenging. We are short, as I just said, I don't know if everyone heard me. The bus drivers are spares. We're down two to three drivers. So what does that mean is that you have a new driver on, you know, two or three of our routes have brand-new drivers that haven't driven that before. LPVEC is sharing these spare drivers around all of the seven districts that they do bus. So it has been challenging. There are some other things. We are not able to go down cul-de-sacs like we have in the past. And I know that that has caused some challenges for folks. They're not used to maybe walking just a little bit more. Again, it's still within, you know, the DESI guidelines, and we're doing the best we can. So we really appreciate everyone's patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
That's.
Is that a new thing this year, the cul-de-sacs?
Yes, it's.
Because of the shortage?
It's more time efficiency.
Well, it's time efficient.
Yeah.
We're also having some challenges at, I think it's Meadow Brook and Mountain View, where the students are coming past, like, 9:05, they're coming 9:10, 9:15 after school has already started. And it's the same buses with the same students. So we understand we're getting some, you know, complaints, some concerns from parents, and rightfully so. Principals are communicating to Central Office. So we know it's not the ideal situation. We are hoping to be able to get more drivers, to get more buses, to spread the kids out more, to be able to then get them to school on time. So I know it's a long, tedious process. And again, you know, I wish that we had magic, that I could just get bus drivers and more buses. But we just cannot go down the cul-de-sacs because, and again, we tried to cater to our families and we try to work with our families as much as we can, but we just cannot, we cannot get the buses down there and be able to get the kids to school on time.
And Pam, can you clarify just again, I know you have mentioned before, how routing works now and where that routing system is really lying?
Well, the routing is at LPVEC, Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. You know, we outsourced that. We had a transportation coordinator. That position was eliminated. We have budget cuts and, you know, there's no easy way on what we had to make decisions, but we didn't fill that position. So the routing now is done by LPVEC and they are working collaboratively with us with Central Office here and the building principals to do the best we can. But it is new, it is different this year. So there are some, you know, things that are different than what they have been in the past.
And if families have questions or concerns about the routes, whom should they contact? Should they be reaching out to Central Office, or should they be contacting somebody at the LPVEC?
If it's directly about the route, they really are best off talking to LPVEC. But certainly, Central Office is always here to take, you know, phone calls and try to be the liaison between LPVEC. It gets a little bit challenging for Kara, who takes the calls here at Central Office, because she doesn't do the routing. We don't see the mapping of where exactly the routes are. So that's why it gets a little bit challenging for us on our end. And although we're not trying to pass the buck by any means and have people just, you know, not deal with it here, we just feel that the LPVEC can probably help them faster and just be more efficient, I guess, with just the whole process. But always, Central Office is here to try to help our families, so do the best we can.
Thank you. I know I've gotten a couple of questions over the past couple of weeks and just want to make sure we're giving families the most accurate information as it pertains to whom to contact and about what, what particular concerns they have. Any other questions about any of the information Gordon or Pam shared? Okay, thanks Pam, thanks Gordon, thanks Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. And I think next up, Mrs. Brown is going to set up and give a curriculum update.
Did you just close your?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, I just, it was weird, but.
Did I shut everything off?
There it goes.
Oh, there it is.
Just a freak.
Alright.
I broke the internet.
I know. Nothing you can do.
It'd be two different remotes.
Same six.
I think it broke the internet.
I know. Leave it up to me. So yes, I'm happy to share some updates in curriculum instruction and assessment, especially around professional development. There's some exciting things going on. So on our two district-wide PD days, the two 3-5 elementaries and Burchland Park and the high school will all have focused on social emotional learning. So the high school and the middle school will work with a program called Innocent Classroom, which really works on providing practical strategies for building relationships with all students. And it's a pretty great program because they work really closely with the leadership team as well. And then developmental design, this is something that we started last year. It's very much like Responsive Classroom. It's actually co-founded by one of the founders of Responsive Classroom, with more of a focus on equity, right? So making sure the strategies are, we're really working for all kids. And they had the basic training last year, and then they'll continue on with empowering language and family engagement strategies. And then, that's wrong, it should say pre-K through second grade, not pre-K through 5th, will be working on letters training. And what that is, is it's really professional development around how kids learn how to read. So it's not a particular program, it's not related to any particular curriculum. It's just, what do we know now with new understandings on how students learn to read and how can we adjust our teaching so that we're best meet with their needs? And then ongoing curriculum work, the English and Social Studies teams have started working this summer and will continue to work, making sure there's alignment and just kind of rejuvenating curriculum. The K-5, I started with a 3-5 group.
Ms. Brown, just one piece on the social studies, they're working specifically on that whole civics project.
That is a big chunk of the work.
Which is huge, something that came out a few years ago that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education wanted social studies departments to start looking at. And so we're finalizing how that civics project is going to look. And I think it's going to sit at the, is it the 10th grade level, 11th grade?
So that's still in flux. This, right now, I believe it is 10th grade. It's in US 1. But we're trying to figure out how to kind of fit everything in, not take out too much from anything and really just give kids what they need. But last year was a pilot, so some kids got to complete the project. This year it's in full because in order to. This year it's in full, because in order to graduate, students need to have completed a civics project. So, uh, the report card committee started off just making sure our student cards were aligned with what standards we're teaching, what does it mean to master those standards? So, that was pre-COVID and we're bringing that work back up, which is really exciting. The ELL team is working on solidifying and aligning our curriculum, especially with the literacy curriculum. The World Language Department got a grant to get assessments, fees waived for, or paid for, for all of our students, both Latin and Spanish. And so they're gonna use that assessment data to see where there are gaps in the curriculum and then make adjustments accordingly. And then in K to five, we have an illustrative math pilot, where they, uh, the folks that piloted, and there's some full teams that are piloting it, got two days of professional development and then they'll get additional time working with the math coaches during their team times, other times and for these days. There's a lot going on, but it's all really good. Before I move on, any questions about PD?
Did, um, they start the illustrative math pilot?
Yes.
What grades?
So, they started at K to five. What happened last year is DESI had these accelerated mathematics grants and it was at the very end of the year. And so I quickly, I knew that there was a lot of interest in this curriculum and this is one of the highly rated ones that they recommended. Um, and a lot of teachers are really ready for something. So I just sent out, you know, if you're interested in piloting, and I got a great response.
You did?
Yeah, K to, K to five.
All right, I wanna chit chat with you later about it.
Sure.
Curious.
Okay.
I think that offers, um, some nice, the potential for some nice vertical alignment because illustrative math is one of the few math curriculums out there that runs from K through, through high school. So that at least opens the doors, the potential for a consistent resource, which I always think is a great, a great opportunity if it's a high-quality resource. Um, it reminds me a little bit of the work that Open Saiyed, which I think we talked about last year, is gonna be doing when we think about curriculum work being able to span vertically. And then I just have to say that the letters, um, program, that's such a great complement to the math recovery work that you all have taken on in, at Meadowbrook and thinking about the science and pedagogy, not only of mathematics instruction, but now complementing that, um, really with letters. Like that is, to me, they're, they're synonymous in terms of when you think about math and the science of teaching math and, and math recovery. And then now you're complementing it with letters, which is really the science of teaching reading to our youngest students. So I, I really think that will help in terms of the acceleration roadmap that the state has laid out. So, that's a nice thing to see out here, Kelly. Kelly, my God, my brain is fried. Heather. Thanks, Kelly. I need to work on my letters.
Heather, for the English and Social Studies curriculum, when is that estimated to be done and, and start implementing?
So, um.
Classes?
I see these social studies, um, they're up for curriculum renewal. So they're also working on, you know, what is it that we actually, you know, how do our units look? And then what curriculum materials would we use for this? Which is great, instead of looking at it the other way, it's like, what's the curriculum and then how does it align? What is the standards and what do we really wanna focus on? So that, they're going through that whole process. The English, what this came out of, obviously they've been following the Common Core, but it's making more of a shift towards, um, more student-centered teaching in terms of, um, thinking about some of the, the texts that we've used in the past that we've used for now, maybe 20 years and thinking about, you know, complementing that with some more, recent texts and also that, um, idea of bringing informational text in with the literature. So, those are the kinds of things they're working on. I imagine we'll continue to work on that this year, but I don't see that really kind of getting solidified till next year.
Are they looking, sorry, are they looking at, um, different texts for each grade level? And which standards they should be focused on for each of the texts and?
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's, it's this shift from, and I'm not saying our English department, but across the country, teaching the novel versus teaching the standards. And so, our teachers have made that shift, but our curriculum is still about teaching that novel. So we're making that shift so that we're teaching the standards.
Right.
Um, and often, if you look at the Common Core state standards, I don't wanna say it doesn't matter what text you use. Obviously you want high-quality texts.
Right.
But there's no specific text that you need to use. And so a lot of times it's great to mix the longer novels with shorter pieces and make those connections with informational texts, because that's where you get that engagement. Because how does this, what I'm reading, connect to the world that I'm aware of? We found a lot of success with that, doing that at the middle school.
Do we have those set texts, like ninth grader should be choosing from this set and tenth?
So that's what we've had in the past, it wasn't even choice, it was we teach this novel.
Oh, okay.
And this novel and, yeah.
Just so.
So, uh, a way to get more access for students. What I did this year is we are part of the MLS, um, there's the Sora app, so students can go on and, and borrow, um, both e-texts and audible texts. And for a lot of the titles, I'm able to rent novels for the, for classes at a pretty low price, which is great for that flexibility. So we're, you know, is this text working out? Maybe not. So we're not investing in, you know, hard copies and we might not end up using them. So that's another way we're kind of use, getting to try out different texts this year.
And then for the, the two PD days for six through 12, are both of those days focused on SEL strategies?
So the way Innocent Classroom works, developmental designs will be all day long, both days.
Okay.
The way Innocent Classroom works is, it's kind of like cycles of improvement. So, you learn something, you try something out in your classroom, then you come back. And so, um, it won't take up the entire PD day. So what I've done is I've made a deal with the middle school and the high school and said, if you give me some hours on the half day, you can have some hours on the full day. So it's that way I can spread out, that was an innocent classroom. And it's not just, it's not really designed for, you know, sit and get.
Right.
They'll be able to target more building specific things in the time that they're using on the full PD day?
Yes.
But I think, with your question around the, the English, once they've identified additional texts, I think they will try to establish that, you know, so in the ninth grade year, this would be the array of texts that you would be using. So you're not seeing 10th grade teacher, having taught English. I know when you're looking for a.
Yes. The kids are like, this is worthless.
Yes.
But then you're, you're not thinking down the road that if you're reading that and then.
Sorry, I wasn't.
The 11th grade, no, no, this is something that, um, Mr. Shil and I had talked about, um, earlier. And so I, I think that's where we need to eventually get to. But what we don't want to do is get back to, we're set in stone, it's this novel this year, you know, and, and we're not teaching anything else. It's, it's adding, it's really getting back to, what's the standard we're trying to achieve here? And then which piece of literature or pieces can help us really fully unlock that?
And I agree with that, but there are a million texts.
Sure.
That we could put a bunch in a grade level.
Yes.
And they could, and a teacher has some kind of choice and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And kids have a choice, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Are we still providing novels, like paper novels? I know it's the 2021, but I'm a big pro on getting off the Chromebooks as much as we can. Are we still gonna buy except to get a.
But sometimes you can't get a kid to read except for on this. And I don't have people read on their phone.
We provide, I think they might, I don't know, I just, I think we never provide paper books anymore. I know they're less private, I understand that, I'm not gonna be around.
I love paper books.
Be like paper, I only have probably like three.
We have paper books, the, the, the idea behind the eBooks is that we can try different things while we're going through this process.
Right, but I worry that they're gonna hop up in the electronic version and then that's all the kids will be and then they'll be here, I mean, more than they already are.
Well, I mean, they could have like their anchor texts, like the big texts, paper.
Yeah.
And then those supplemental texts could be electronic.
Yeah, electronic, yeah.
Yep. And then the other piece, and, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but the nice thing about having kids read on a computer is for those kids for whom they have to listen to it, it doesn't seem so weird, because everyone's reading on that. So if I have my headphones in, and that's universal design and, and that's neither here nor there. But I'm not saying, you know, we still should have those paper copies and have it be a choice again. Do you wanna read it on this? Do you wanna read it on this? Do you wanna listen to it?
And go one step further, further. I know my kid is delighted when they hand her an old dilapidated text, so she can open it up and look at it. And I know they're not making the textbooks anymore, but having even the old dilapidated ones stay in our classrooms as we move forward with like new textbooks that are probably 100% on them, they're, they're nice to have. So you have that one kid who needs to physically see it and turn pages. I hope we always have something like that, even if they're old, it's still the same information. So.
Except for with the science.
Don't ever throw them out.
Yeah. Yeah, my, my, my hand-me-down is like videos from 1950, didn't think about the science ever.
Wow.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So.
All right.
No, I mean, in terms of the novels and that type of thing.
Yes, yeah, 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 no, I know, they do, they like to, I think some.
I mean, novels have history behind them and I think that's, you don't put that on, you know, a computer.
Nope.
You know.
Agreed.
Right.
All right. And, uh, a lot of professional development has also happened with the. It's thinking, there we go. Uh, with the leadership team. So we're continuing to work, uh, with, uh, we are going to get together with a district-wide MTSS team, but we've really been focusing on helping the principals with their school-based MTSS teams in terms of setting expectations, guidelines. They have a guide now that really kind of breaks down all the different, um, aspects of it. Um, and like I said before, with Innocent Classroom and developmental designs to some extent, they do like to work with the leadership team beforehand, so there's buy-in and they're really making the workshops work for the, the community context. And we've been working on developing SEL surveys for students and for staff. So those, I will be letting families know about the SEL surveys, it'll probably be coming out next week. And we use that to, um, make sure we don't have kids who are falling through the cracks who might need extra support with, um, social emotional support, um, that we're not aware of. And we use that to provide those kinds of supports for kids.
How should families anticipate receiving that communication? Cause I remember last year when we started going over survey data, I think we each kind of started to receive some emails and some communication with families that they weren't aware.
Yes.
That this was happening.
Yes.
So just as we go forward.
So I'm gonna do Blackboard Connect and Blooms.
Okay.
And the portals, just gonna do it all.
Okay.
For my basis. And we're continuing to work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity on one of our equity goals, which is teacher diversification in terms of recruitment, hiring and retention. So that works really exciting and it really just helps us not only with that process, but really looking at, um, you know, uh, what is, what kind of teacher do we want here in the LPS? And, and, you know, looking at that.
Actually, the, the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, um, they helped us last year focus in on, on the multi-tiered system of support teams. And one of the great things that they did, um, was they, and I guess this was, uh, one of the benefits, I guess, of Zoom, because you could have, um, many different people participating. And so we really started last year with their help to build sort of the facilitation and leadership skills, if you will, of, of colleagues across the district. And so our MTSS teams really now with the guide that Ms. Brown just talked about, have people on them in the buildings who can coordinate and facilitate the meeting and, and really understand where that team's going. This year, what we're doing is focusing back with, um, the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity with our leadership team, just to make sure that, um, they're always focused in understanding not only, um, sort of where we've been, but what's the vision for the future and, and help us develop that. And, uh, so we felt that this year, last year was expanded out, this year it's coming back in a little bit with first, in the first few months, that group of, say, 12, 13, 14 people to really help us with that, um, as we take the next step forward.
And then the last thing, no, thank you.
Wanted to jump in on that.
No, that's perfect. Working with the, the grade level and continuity collaborative teams, I had mentioned before, the department heads received, uh, three days of training with research for better teaching on their coaching, um, teams for, now I'm gonna forget the whole thing. It's around the formative assessment, I can't remember, for high, high-impact teaching, coaching effective teams for high-impact teaching. But it's really around, uh, certain cycles of improvement around formative assessment. And, uh, we were lucky, uh, for some of the folks who weren't able to attend this summer, we have some makeup sessions, uh, one of which is this Wednesday. There will be some people. So, uh, the goal being that all of our department heads will have had this training and will be able to effectively lead their teams around these cycles.
And then as the MTSS teams are working, are they creating documents for educator use to say if you're a tier one student, these are the types of supports you should be receiving? If you're falling into that tier two category, these are the types of supports and then tier three? And then are those being looked at vertically to ensure that we have alignment? So that kids are receiving appropriate services based on, um, where they're kind of falling?
So there's two things going on with the MTSS, it's improving systems like that. So are, you know, do we have that vertical alignment? Do the, the interventions make sense for what kids need? And at the same time, if kids need help right now, we're gonna use what we have in place. So, and they're understanding that, that it's about making sure kids are getting what they need right now. But it's also about those cycles of improvement to say, you know, what's not working here? And if, if there are menu of interventions which we have, needs to be refined, explained, aligned, then that would be something that we would work on.
I just think with so many of the things that you've put forth this evening, a lot of that is newer and ensuring that everybody knows the who, the what, the why and the how of when those pieces should be used in best service of students.
Yes, and that's part of the work that we're doing, uh, with the leadership team and the MTSS teams, because it is new and so, you know, what is it exactly that we do? Um, and one of the things is how is this different from an ACT team? So a lot of folks are realizing this is more about looking at that global level and really seeing trends and seeing kids before we, we, it's not about waiting for a teacher recommendation. We can sometime, we can see often from the data that we have, um, and target kids. Not that the teacher recommendation is not important and not that the ACT team doesn't have other things, but rather than using that as, you know, your mode of getting kids into interventions, this is a little bit more efficient and you can have a broader stroke and get more kids what they need quicker. All right, and then finally, uh, SRO three due today and submitted?
Yeah.
Yay! We also apply for the Teacher Diversification Pilot Grant, which will allow us to provide, uh, some funding to paraprofessionals, um, who are BIPOC, who apply, uh, towards their, um, teacher certification. They would have to agree to teach in the district for three years. So, if we get that grant, then we have to create the whole process of how we give that and who gets it and qualifications and criteria, but just waiting to see if we get it. Um, and then the accelerated mathematics instruction for students really helped us out a lot. It paid for a lot of our ST math, our iReady math licenses and the entire illustrative math pilot, including the professional development. So, those are very exciting opportunity, um, that DESI provided, so we took advantage of it.
How is that working in terms of the balance of, you know, I've heard Greg talk about time on screen, but also thinking about minutes with educators when both ST math and iReady have pretty high minimum requirements for student usage? I think ST math.
So to be quite frank, ST math, because we have these grants, is really the priority in during the classroom time and using that information to, um, uh, plan instruction, see where we might need to do a puzzle talk, things like that. Where, we can't, like you said, do both. And so the iReady, because we don't have a grant, is there because a lot of parents were wanting something extra at home. So they might use iReady at school, um, but again, there's really not enough time in the day. But we did not want, we didn't wanna take away those, those, you know, those additional pathways. So ST math actually now has a, they, you can have an individual pathway. Before it was kind of like, we're learning this, you're doing this, now it's, I'm working on this. So, the iReady is just there for, um, kids to continue work on that pathway, um, at other times.
So it'd be interesting to see the correlation then, because we do take the diagnostics for both reading and math.
Yeah.
Via iReady. And ST math, to my knowledge, does not have.
Right.
A mechanism for assessment, um, built into it other than the pathways. It doesn't have a diagnostic or any kind of formative assessment that is built in to trigger changes in path other than the child's progress as they go through. So thinking about ways that we balance or look at reflectively, are we seeing more gains on diagnostics based on the usage of ST math? Or are we potentially seeing slips? And is that correlated to not hitting the iReady minimum requirements for minutes?
I think that information is really important and I think as we go through the. I think that information is really important, and I think as we go through the process of looking at this pilot and and going through the DESI process of um, you know, taking on a new curriculum. That'll be part of a larger math vision.
Yeah.
So that we can be on the same page. And and ultimately, uh, I think we might have to decide between the two.
Right.
Because it, you know, we have, it's a lot of personalized math instruction that we have.
In the short run, we'll be able to see with the diagnostic. Our window is finishing.
Which one? Mm-hmm. Exactly.
This week. Um, but we also, we are using um. K-five obviously is more ST math, but um six through eight is predominantly I-ready if I'm.
Correct.
Noting that it does that.
Yeah, ST math, they're not really used to.
Um, and so they're utilizing both the reading and the math um and utilizing the individual pathways.
And I'm guessing too through MTSS, you might be able to tease out.
Yes.
Are there different populations of students who would benefit from one versus the other? So on ST math, you're targeting some students who potentially may have. Some concerns around reading because there's no, there's, yeah, there's absolutely no reading involved, no auditory involved. It's pure problem solving.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas with I-ready, as you move up, there's, there's quite a bit of reading involved in the math.
Right.
So are there populations of students, maybe children who have dyslexia or children with L O, in the L O D programs who might benefit from something like an ST math versus. Uh, maybe even some of the phase-one or phase-two Ls in the district might benefit from something like that um as opposed to some other kids who might benefit from I-ready?
Since my friends there brought it up, I'm gonna ask you about screen time again. Now that we're out of COVID and we're not out of COVID, bring that back. Now that we're no longer teaching remotely and we're not synchronized, what kind of percentage are the students on the Chromebooks across?
I have to say, uh, you know, I don't have a hard quantitative piece for you, but just walking through the classrooms and I've been to a lot of schools over the last couple of weeks. This, it's minimal.
Yeah.
You know, I was in one class today where they were making topographic maps and doing all, I mean, it's really, I think everyone's craving that hands-on time.
That's more hands-on.
Great.
So.
No, that's what I want to hear because I don't want us to fall into the pattern of this what we did last year. It's already, you know, already set. We're just gonna learn remotely in person.
Yeah. Yeah.
And and even even if they are, um, because we did, uh, Ms. Brown and I were walking through the middle school together. And in one of the English classes, they were working together to look at their writing. And so it's still. Sort of two individuals, they're looking at the screen, but they're reading the writing. In some cases, someone printed it out, so they were looking at the paper copy. So it it definitely is not what it was last year.
Great.
Everybody is really happy to be.
Oh, I bet. Oh, I'm sure. We're happy they're here. Yeah, definitely.
Yes. Kids and teachers love it.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's it?
Thanks.
Heather.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm afraid to turn this off.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's good. I just turned it back on.
Okay. You got some crazy.
Yeah.
That's into it, yeah, that's fine.
Are those Samsungs?
These are, these are.
It's the same, it's the same remote. My remote will turn those.
Oh, I see. Okay. It's the university remote. All right, so we have our first go at capital planning next on the agenda.
Okay, so this is not as exciting. Well, in some cases, it's exciting because your, things such as Meadowbrook's um, what had been modulars, now we are, have um. Um, beautiful new classrooms that our students are, they got to experience last year at the end of the year, but now they get to experience them from day one, hopefully all the way through day one hundred and eighty. Um, but in your packets, you have a spreadsheet that is the look um for the next five years at capital needs. And in that very first column in F Y twenty-three, uh, these are the most urgent needs. Um, and right now it's broken out by school and by district. Um, in terms of Meadowbrook, uh, the reason that the second project on there is highlighted is because what we'd like to do is break the parking lot renovation or redesign. Um, and have the renovation, the paving, and um say reconfigure, reconfiguration of. Um, traffic islands and so forth as one part of it, and then the lights could happen uh as a separate part, especially if the town needs to separate that out and, you know, we might get one over the other. So we're waiting on a cost, uh, and that one ninety should come down a little bit um. Uh, in terms of the parking lot redesign itself. And so that's where the highlight is.
I imagine you're working with Bruce on this, but if 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 that's the case, if we're gonna split them out, which I would think would make more sense to do them simultaneously, cost-effective wise, but at least. And I don't know that. I know, I see what you're trying to do, but I'm sure Bruce is thinking ahead. If we're gonna do a lighting project, then we're gonna put the conduit in, we're gonna put.
Right.
Things in necessary to put in before we put the pavement down.
Yep.
So then we're not tearing up new pavement to put in electrical conduit, right? I'm sure he's seeing it that way.
Mm-hmm.
It's worth just.
Yeah, I will, I will read.
Betting that, yeah, yeah. Because they hate tearing up new pavement, you know?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. We we're not fans of that either. Um, so, um, I actually will, we'll talk with Bruce and we'll, we'll be talking.
I'm sure he's thinking that way anyway, but it it's worth putting it in a bid.
Right.
Read their press proposal. That it it will, at least pre-pre-wired or whatever.
Yep. Um, and so for Meadowbrook, really, it's really only about the parking lot. That's their, their one big item right now.
According to looking two years out, the Meadowbrook rooftop air conditioner, is that a new item? I don't have ever seen that before.
No, that's, um, that actually comes from the facility study. When we did the facility study, remember, it was far out.
Yeah.
It was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen when we did that. Um, so all of them have it somewhere. Um, I think though at some point, uh, Meadowbrook. Moved it up in terms of urgency.
Yeah.
However, the interesting thing, and it's, it's not necessarily the most energy efficient, is since that time when that was moved. Every classroom in Meadowbrook has a window unit.
Yeah.
And that was specifically taken into account when we did the windows and doors because we had to make sure that all the air conditioners were the same model.
Hmm.
Um, had the same dimensions, yeah. So, because we were putting them all back. And at that time, we also, any air conditioner that was. Older or starting to show signs of failing, um, we purchased a new one. So. For the most part, those air conditioners are no more than two years old. Um, and the, all our classrooms obviously have new windows and um. The building itself has new doors and windows across all of them. So, so your classrooms are air-conditioned spaces, so that might be something we could bump out.
Right. Wow, and does that do the whole building, the one point one?
Um.
At ACs?
That would be, that, yeah, that price might be, I'm gonna check that.
Whole building?
Yeah. Well, it's gonna be all, it's gonna be your administrative office, probably your library, and.
It's all the same ventilation system.
Well, these are rooftop units.
Oh, each?
You'd have to do rooftop units in each area, yeah.
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
Yeah.
It's gotta be more than that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I'd never price that. Happy with the job.
Well, these are also, since that's fiscal year twenty-five.
Yeah, what do you vote on, two percent a year?
Ah, yeah, three in some cases.
But I wonder if it's gonna change because of everything else.
I mean, I think when, if if that were becoming the most urgent item, we would have to really price it up.
Well, of course, let's be honest, we never get a million dollars in capital projects total on a yearly basis. So all these that are over a million are a pipe dream and will never happen unless we do some sort of.
Although, if you look at the bottom of the spreadsheet, we did last year.
We did the, we did the mod.
We did quite well. We, um, we have the, we have Mountain View um modulars. Uh, that was approved, so it's, that's just under a million, nine hundred and fifty thousand. We finished off our exterior door. We had broken that into multiple phases at maple shade, and so that was thirty-one thousand eight hundred. Um, the carpets in uh in Burson Park Library, Computer Room, and Course Rooms, those have been on for a while, and we got those. So we're hoping to do those over one of the vacations this year. Um, and then obviously, we're moving on the feasibility study. Um, actually, this week, we have to. Mrs. Blair's been sending out um requests for the uh informational packet, and we'll be answering questions by Friday for any potential applicants. Um, and then the last one was something that came more through the um community preservation funding. Uh, as well as our own rental account here, which is resurfacing of the E L A test track. So we, we, we did get a um. A decent number of projects, but to the point you're making, yes, um, you know, going well over a million is challenging in years past.
Yeah. I mean, some of those things were long. I'm, I'm, I'm with Greg here. Some of those things, I mean, the Mountain View replacement portable has been since I started.
Yeah. Right.
How many years ago?
Yeah.
Twelve?
Well, look at the totals at the bottom of each column. Seven point six we're gonna request.
You know? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Two point seven the following year, five point seven.
And that's down, actually, because if we're in, last year, I wanna say it was around eleven million.
There was.
Because we, because we had modulars on there and we had some of those other.
I don't know. I think we just need a better way because the buildings continue to to age.
Sure.
And we continue to plead our case, capital planning committee. I know Bruce is on that. I know Ryan's on that. Um. I, I just don't think there's enough funding for the, for the, for the buildings. They're, they're aging drastically. We, I mean, these, these are all evident. The numbers are.
I mean, I, I think the fact that they're now bonding again.
Yeah.
Is is certainly helping.
But my concern is how much our construction cost is gonna go up. Is that gonna, that's gonna cut back on. The availability of funding.
Yeah.
And the number of projects that.
We did increase, um, anything that we couldn't get a solid uh price quote on, we increased it by five percent this year, knowing that uh everything is going up.
Yeah. Is there a way, and I'm trying to, I'm not trying to jump ahead here, but I'm looking at Maple Shade with their parking lot. Is there a way to combine that with Meadowbrook in one bid type thing? You know what I mean?
Um, I can ask.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure you can, you can do something with the paving.
They use a bidding all, they do the street.
They bid all the paving out once, but they have other things in the project itself.
But I, you know, let's, let's look at that as a way to possibly knock something off. Yeah, I think they, they typically. Well, I'm sure they do, but I mean, if we present it, if we present it that way. Yep. And then the maple shade roof, that's the rest after the cafeteria and the gym.
Right, so we had, um, back in twenty-eleven had replaced the cafeteria, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And ironically, it was the.
We've been here.
It's been a while.
It was the weekend that the Packers and Steelers played in the Super Bowl.
That's right.
Um, and they were just commenting on, because the, the Packers and Steelers played yesterday, um, that that was the first time those two teams had played again since that Super Bowl. And in my mind, I went back to the roof.
Yeah.
Not so much the football game.
Yeah, yeah.
If you remember, we were doing a press uh conference here on that Sunday night.
During the Super Bowl.
Just to, to allow people to know what was going on because we had, we had closed school on that Friday and then had to um act quickly over the weekend to reinforce the uh roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I said this.
Find a new school.
Again.
And then find a new school.
I ask this every year. Would that qualify under the accelerated repair program through MSBA?
Um, it, it might. You're, you're not talking a full roof, so it's, it's a little different. Um.
That's a good question. But with, with the, with the extenuating circumstances going back to two thousand and eleven.
You, you, yeah. Um, it might.
I mean, I'm just trying to think outside the box here, trying to get some of this stuff done. Well, especially at a million dollars, it's not a. Well, that's, it's right under a million bucks, so I mean. Bad avenue, yeah. Yeah.
Or in the accelerated repair, uh, roofs, right?
Yeah.
More spoilers than those.
Windows. Windows and doors.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know.
I don't, I don't know how they do that if it's not a full roof, but I can certainly check.
But I don't see why, because there's, there's, many buildings have different additions.
Think I've perhaps come across that before.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's something we can.
It can't be unique.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's like, a really good way to go. It's just worth a shot. At least inquire about it.
Oh, yeah.
Then we'll have the answer. Here's the thing, we can turn around and say, listen, we're looking into this. Yeah. And because they're gonna say, have you looked at other avenues? I mean, we have to think ahead of these guys.
We do.
And how much is this synchronous to the last year's F Y twenty-three proposal? Are they the same? Are we asking for the same one that we're on the column over last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. With except, with exception, the ones we took off.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Um, the one thing that I, I know, you know, we've discussed and um I will also, as I talked to the um MSBA about. Is there is real concern with the area that we call the freshman wing.
Yeah.
Um, but it's over on this side. It's a different membrane. I know that both Bruce and um Joe Dunn are very concerned about it because. Well, especially with all the wet weather we've had in the month of July, but really now all fall, including today. I, I don't think with us being in the process, if we were to spend some money to replace that membrane, since it is isolated and you could replace just that membrane. That that would hinder us in the process, but I will double-check that through Emma Parrish, who's our liaison.
Well, the other thing is, we're still what, six years out? So I mean, we've gotta keep, we've gotta keep the building. Well, but so, so we've looked, follow that through, though. You've funded this, it won't be done until next year, then we're five years out. I mean, it's. I, you know, I, we gotta, I, and I take Bruce's uh opinions.
I mean, so the, the membrane is pulling away from the sides of the roof?
Yeah, but it was doing that when we walked it, three years ago.
Yeah, but it's.
I said leaking more than it was?
Well, it's raining more than it was.
Leaking the same room.
Yeah, it's raining more than it was.
It's not gonna get better. It, it, it's gonna open a can of worms and, I don't know. Well, I want, I've got to hear, I'd like to hear what MSBA has to say.
So it would be worth, it would be worth taking a look.
Well, I'm not worried about MSBA. I'm worried about the taxpayers funding a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and us tearing it up. Well, no, I understand that, but we also have to provide safety. No, and then that's the, that's the primary issue, I think. That's the other issue, you know?
And my, my thought is the whole mold issue, because we're seeing it around in all of our communities, and I don't think the weather's gonna change anytime soon. We're, you know, I think we're almost, I feel like we're kind of in a new cycle of weather, whatever you wanna call it. But I mean, it does, it bothers me to see that buildings that are actually being occupied, not just ones that they were dumb and closed up and didn't take care of.
Right.
Are, are finding mold. And I mean, that's where something like this could transpire. I mean, I know that there's moisture meters and things like that that we could check with it, but.
Yeah. It's just a hard one, though, because that's a big chunk of our capital investment to put on for five years and say, we're right there at all.
Yeah. Yes.
But, you know, I think we gotta, we just have to ask the question and go from there. Yeah, no, I know. And I don't think Bruce would have put it forward if he had been with that.
If it was necessary.
Well, they were talking about.
He seems just very concerned about it.
But I mean, it's been.
It's not structurally, it's fine. We know, we've, we've checked the steel decking.
Right, right.
So it's, it's really about the leaking, uh, the, the fact that the membrane is pulling away from the sides, which is gonna increase the leaking.
Yeah, but this isn't new to us either. It's been. No, I know. We've just gotten this far. And again, that could be a hundred fifty-seven thousand we spend on the Arkham tables or, you know. And I get all of that, but it's just. The, the number's the number. The number's a number, right?
Right.
So. I mean, there's questions to be asked, and we'll go from there. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I.
So I'll, I'll ask that question. I, I just want you to know as we get into those discussions, that's gonna be of concern and so will be brought up by other folks.
What about that electrical upgrade? Why, that's not worth it.
That's just the, that's the full, we're not, I mean, we're just keeping that as.
We gotta take that off there, though.
Well, what if?
We've done the, the small project.
You know, they don't vote for the new high school. It better stay on our capital.
But it's fine, but we're requesting seven million. We're not requesting that three point eight this year.
No, I mean, we can move it back. I know, but I'm just saying.
We should move it. That's all.
Like an asterisk and pull it out of the seven million and just say.
And the parking lot, right? Are we gonna actually spend money on the parking lot? Are we gonna tear that up? Well, that's been, that's been on there too for a couple of years. I don't know, for five years out, six years out.
That would be done.
Well, we're gonna make the, the parking lot's gonna.
All of those are, were projects that we wanted to keep.
Yeah, identified.
Correct.
Yeah. But I don't think we're presenting those correctly. Well, I think we put it, like, we have done in the past to just put it at the bottom of the sheet so that everybody's aware of it, but it doesn't count. Yeah. Towards the grand total. Yes. I agree. Because you're gonna, uh.
So that, that pulls out over, well, five million or five million.
Well, yeah. Are you gonna present, you're gonna give this to Town Council, Mary?
First, I'm gonna give it all back to you, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
This is the format that they look to.
This plus a cover sheet.
Yep, okay.
And then they also ask for each individual project to be, to have a little bit of, more of a description.
And what does this do? Have you got a timeframe yet?
Um, so end of October, so I wanted to get these things answered for all of you and then bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. And we took the bleachers off. We asked for them this year.
No, we've always had it a year out.
It's out. Didn't we ask for them this year, though, specifically? We did ask for them this year. Well, it was down on.
We, we had mentioned it, we mentioned it in community preservation.
We had it as a request. We did have it as a request.
Not as, not as a.
A final request?
A final request in.
But it was, it was way down on the list.
It was always, it was always, we moved it. We always bumped it one year.
Yeah. Okay. So you're gonna bring this back next, next time?
Yeah.
And are we gonna prioritize or are we gonna wait to?
Um, so right now, it's in the priority of how the buildings are seeing it.
Yeah.
So, um, next time, if, you know, if this group wants to prioritize how the district or the, and the school committee would like to.
I think it, I think it should be, I think we should do it that way. Yeah, and they're listening to us, but we'll try. Well, no, but. Um, what about budget? What's the, what's the timeframe on that?
Um, I think they're doing capital first, trying to get that accomplished, and then uh beginning preliminary discussions hopefully in late October, early November. So that we can have some of the more substantive, larger discussions, maybe possibly in December.
Does the town have a better grip on the process, do we know? Does the town have a better grip on the process, do we know?
I think that's being discussed in terms of how that process should be outlined this year.
We'll find out.
It's gonna be a debacle. I mean, I know it's not, but it's just exhausting.
It is exhausting.
Yeah, no, you're right, Sarah. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we can come up with a process ahead of time that we can say, this is how it's gonna go and this is where we can make decisions instead of just doing it by the, flying by the seat of our pants and cutting our budget. Up, you know, and then adding to the townside budget. What was the reason for that? And who has the authority and why did they do it? We don't really know. So we cut positions, we talked about it earlier today, where the townside has added positions last year. So it wasn't about money, it was about something else and we don't know. So we just have to streamline that process better, so we're all working together.
And make it more transparent, so that each person knows what goal it was.
Yeah, decide ahead of time what the, each step will be instead of just making it up.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's been a moving target the past couple of years and.
It shouldn't be.
And it shouldn't be if it.
Charter lays it out, we never follow the charter.
Well, it's, yeah, and if it's, if it's level services, then stick to level services. If it's one, whatever they decide, don't change.
I'm hoping it won't be level services.
Well, I'm hoping not either, but I'm.
But that meeting will be important. I think now that we've solidified that meeting with the town council, the town manager and the school committee, that that should have some meaning. It shouldn't just be, yeah, just give us level services and we'll decide to cut you and add to the town.
Right.
That's not what they decided, so they should know better going into this. This is where, this is a target. See, I think they're seeing Mary should have more power over our budget, the town manager, which is a mistake. However, her power is recommendation. So she can either recommend the school budget as is or not recommend it as is. So she does have some input on it. They should push ours all the way through and the council itself should have a discussion whether or not they wanna cut funding of the schools or not. It shouldn't be the, a subcommittee of the council that creates a budget to send back to the council. That's absurd. It's ridiculous and we gotta change that. I know it's not up to me, but to have a subcommittee send your, your own committee a budget for other departments is ridiculous. It doesn't make sense. So I am hoping we can work that out. That's all I have to say.
You'll have more. It's okay.
More. It could be better and we can all work together and we all want the same.
I think, yeah, everybody agrees that it can be better.
We all want the same thing, but the process is flawed because we make it up and we don't follow the charter and the combat council presents itself its own budget.
And I think, again, we've talked about it before, but I do think we need to have those hard numbers that describe how much outside funding comes into the schools, that showcase that it really is a model services. There's a ton of money that comes in from ELEAF and outside agencies. There's a ton of money that parents contribute.
Grants and, yeah.
Grants and ETOs. All of that has funded a number of initiatives and being able to document that and say, listen, we really aren't hitting the mark because we're getting a lot of outside money.
Well, we cut six positions last year and the town manager added an assistant and the town finance director added an assistant, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I said that, I thought I said that.
No, but it's also, no, but it is frustrating because you don't want them to say, well, ELEAF's giving you $40,000, so we have $40,000 less. Those people work long and hard to collect the money and, and those money should not be eliminated from. Those are for things to enrich our children and it should always, always be used for that.
Help innovation to eventually, if, if that, whatever the grant might be for, looks like it's something the district wants to then embrace, then budget money goes towards operational.
Right, but I mean, we wanna evolve and that's how we know how to evolve and, you know.
It's not supposed to supplant.
Right, and I see some of the grants that you get and, and they're fantastic. Like the one that you're saying, like maybe helping parents become teachers. I mean, that's great. That's work and that's above, should always be above and beyond what they're, they're giving us, because.
And now, those are the conversations we have to have and provide all the data and say, and the documentation, say, okay, this, this doesn't supplant our budget. This is helping, but it's, doesn't, it doesn't mean, it's not meant to take the place of a $40,000 or a $70,000, whatever the number is. It's above and beyond. Because the grants aren't guaranteed. This, none of this money is guaranteed, so I mean, you can't, you can't rely on it.
All right.
So we'll see that week, Kevin?
Yes, come back. Let me come down to some new business unless there's any further discussion around capital. Okay. So then we have a request from Lacrosse for the girls' college lacrosse showcase.
So in your informational package, you have a memo from Mr. McGee, the athletic director, and this is a showcase that we have hosted before. We did not host last year due to the pandemic, but they would like to bring it back. And it's something that brings out teams from all over New England and also brings out 100 college coaches and scouts who take a look at, you know, student athletes who are playing lacrosse, and it's always been a pretty great event. The one challenging piece is that it is on a Sunday and it does start at 8:00 AM, so they can get all the games in. They have in the past been very aware and cooperative in keeping noise down, especially in the stadium, which borders obviously St. Michael's until we get past the 12 o'clock hour.
Yeah, so the mass is at 12:30. That's the last mass. I don't know if that's an issue. I do appreciate putting that in there. And one thing I do wanna bring us up is we continue to go against our policy against not having things Sunday morning. I know we've done this before, but I don't know if we should have that policy. I mean, we seem to approve everything that comes up.
Well, if the policy's sitting there, at least it's, we can put some parameters around it.
Parameters or restrictions, yeah.
Yeah, you know, if, if we get rid of it.
I mean, the intention was quietness on a Sunday morning and also we, time for families to have some family time and not always have things scheduled. I know this is an outside event and I know we've done it before, but we're just not kinda sticking to that Sunday thing, that's all.
Yeah.
But, that's right.
I thi- I think the three main events that reoccur and then one that actually this year, I guess is not occurring, but have been Raise of Hope, this event and the Spartan Sprint. Those have been the ones that have been on Sunday. I don't know that we've had a ton of other events on Sundays. And I think the, well, I can't speak for Raise of Hope, but the other ones are looking not to get into the mix of all the things that happen on Saturdays.
Yeah.
And so that, that's where the challenge is, you know, especially for the lacrosse players who may be playing other sports.
Yeah.
The Spartan Sprint's only like a few hours, two or three hours. It's not all day.
I mean, I did it for two minutes, so, you know. No, you did it for two minutes.
No, you did it. Why did you both?
We were really strict. No, I didn't at all.
And you know, maybe the policy being in place just deters people as well. And because it's another step, it's another piece of the puzzle.
I mean, we're still on the side of that. The intention was for families to have time and not us over scheduling things because we all feel, you know, over scheduled in life. And so that's all. I know we've done it before and we're gonna prove it tonight probably, but I just wanted to bring it up. But I do appreciate Kevin at least acknowledging the Sunday morning.
And I'll, I'll let him know that we really gotta push that out to one.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
It's 11:30, man. They moved the, the third test 11:30, so.
Maybe it's gonna be what, 10?
So he should really push, keep at least 12:30, all right?
Okay.
And it's changed back to 11:30.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I, yeah, 12:30.
Right. Is there any further discussion or somebody wanna put forth a motion?
Are they paying a rental for them?
They do pay rent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says it in there.
Which is helpful for things like resurfacing.
Then we must provide.
We provide, yeah, we provide supervision. Actually, we provide a number of supervisors that are out there, yeah. And they, they actually provide quite a number of their supervisors as well.
Oh, yeah. I know, it's a big, big, big event.
Pretty big event.
I know, they're using all the fields.
And I think they've expanded and they're using some of Minnetonka's fields.
Oh, wow, really?
I think so. I could be wrong on that.
Wow.
There is a tournament that uses both of.
Oh, it's the entire athletic facility.
Yeah.
We charge more for them? No, I'm serious.
No, there, there is more, but we also try to, you know, be.
Work with them?
Yes, exactly.
But we don't just charge them for the turf?
No, we charge them for four.
That's correct.
Okay. Greg, I'm hoping that we approve Lacrosse rental on Sunday, November 7, 2021, as presented.
I'll second. Motion made by Greg, seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And that motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. McGee?
Right, and then we have MOU for ELPS Food Services that we talked about earlier.
Move to approve the MOU for the new three-year contract with ELPS Food Services beginning July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, as previously discussed.
Motion made by Bill, seconded by Antonella. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. And that motion carries five to zero as well. And the last, oh, are you saying something?
I just said thank you.
Oh, okay. And the last item is superintendent's contract.